Person County Board of Commissioners meeting to order and ask Commissioner Sims to lead us in invocation.
Bless you, Father. The only Father we just thank you for allowing us to be here today. We just ask that you would lead us and guide us as we go forth with the county commissioners meeting. We ask that you would be with those who are during this difficult times, those who may be suffering with the COVID virus and we just lift them up to you and pray that you will comfort them and heal them. And we ask that you would be with our soldiers and military who are overseas and those who are suffering out there as well. Lead us and guide us and go forth, be with our county. We pray these things in your holy name. Amen.
Ask Commissioner Clayton lead us in. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have discussion, adjustment, approval of agenda, which I think we have some things. One thing that we do want to add, which is to go over our rules of procedure of the Board of County Commissioners. We'll add that as, do we want to table all these now? Can we do that now or do we table once we get there? All right, I'm going to make a motion that we table item number two, item number three, item number five, item number six, and add the rules of procedures of the Board of County Commissioners. Everybody understand? All right, no discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. No informal comments, but we would ask the manager to introduce our new Pats director.
Yes, good morning Commissioners. My pleasure to introduce to you today the new director of Pats, our transportation services. Kurt Newfang is here and this is his, how many days am I in?
This is day 11.
Day 11. So we wanted to allow you to meet Kurt. He's continuing operations during this time and things are staying relatively busy. Even so, so thank you for being part of our team, Kurt.
Thank you.
This is our Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. My name is Kurt Newfang. I have a little bit of 30 years of experience in public transit. I'm a retired major in the Army Reserve as a transportation officer. I've worked in Greensboro and Chapel Hill and NC DOT, so I've got some experience here in the state. I'm excited to be here. I think that I'll be able to provide the leadership that you're going to be looking for as we move forward and that I'm called for such a time as this. And just to let you know that we, in the operations of our services, beginning today, we're only going to take the reservations for employment-related trips as well as medical appointments and dialysis. However, we are going to expand our Uptown Shuttle beginning next Monday, where we're going to put another bus out there. So while other systems in the state, bless you, are cutting back on their services and certainly we're going to cut back on some of ours, we're actually going to expand some service because that Uptown Shuttle serves dependent populations, bless you, and low-income housing and some senior housing areas that are really needed in the community. So we want to offer that as a better service in the future while we're cutting back on some. So we have the stuff at the printers as we speak and hopefully we'll get that out this week. That service will begin on Monday. Both Heidi and Laura and the staff has been very gracious to me and support and provided me guidance and I really appreciate it. Do you all have any questions? Me, I know you got a full agenda, so I don't want to take up too much of your time, but thank you for allowing me to come speak with you this morning.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have the consent agenda.
Move for approval.
It's been properly moved for approval. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, item number four, resolution of agreement for banking services with BBNT. Amy Weber.
Good morning Commissioners. I am here this morning to make an urgent request for the board to approve a resolution and agreement with BBNT in order for the county to secure banking services that is currently performed by SunTrust Bank. As many folks have likely heard by now, SunTrust Bank is merging with BBNT, both of which will now be called Truist. We have known this since early 2019, but SunTrust assured us a smooth transition and minimal impacts as a result of this merger. However, that changed in mid-February of this year when SunTrust suddenly entered a state-approved divestiture agreement with First Horizon Bank that will cause the majority of SunTrust branches in the state to be sold to First Horizon before the merger, before the SunTrust/BBNT merger is scheduled to take place. Many larger urban areas in North Carolina have multiple SunTrust branches, all of which were not necessarily part of this divestiture process, allowing their customers in those areas to continue their banking services at the branches that remained open. However, Person County was not as fortunate to have this option, leaving us with no bricks and mortar SunTrust branch to continue banking services as of June of this year. As you can imagine, the realization of this predicament caused an immediate frenzy of meetings with BBNT and SunTrust representatives as we investigated our options for continuing banking services under Truist after we will no longer have access to the SunTrust branch. At that time, there were some proposals in consideration between BBNT and the Department of Justice for, between, yeah, between BBNT and the Department of Justice for providing a teller station at BBNT for SunTrust customers who would not be absorbed by First Horizon divestiture such as ourselves. This would have been our most favorite option since it would have allowed for transferring our accounts over to the BBNT branch without having to establish new accounts. However, three weeks after we were initially notified of the SunTrust divestiture, BBNT responded to say that this option would not be available to us in this area. We were presented with two options at that point. The first being that they could provide courier services to pick up our deposits and take them to the nearest SunTrust branch, which I believe would have been Hillsborough, until the merger would be finalized sometime next year. But once we discussed the level of services necessary for Person County to continue under the SunTrust/Truist arrangement, such as the need for DSS clients to cash checks, access to security drop boxes, fraud controls would no longer be in place, and other various banking tasks that are beyond just a deposit-based system, they quickly realized that this would not be a viable solution for Person County. This leads to the second option, which is what I'm presenting to you today. The resolution and agreement from BBNT is a proposal designating them as the county's new depository, creating new accounts at their branch under the Truist entity prior to the final merger process. Because BBNT is tied in with SunTrust as Truist, they are offering the same fee schedule, services, and earnings interest credit that we now have under SunTrust. In fact, their proposal provides exception pricing discounts that are equal to what BBNT provides other state agencies. These fees, services, and discounts will be effective for a two-year term, which is actually beyond the one-year term typically offered to state agencies. This is a sound proposal and it facilitates our ability to transition over without any changes to the current services and benefits that we were receiving with SunTrust. Although this requires a major overhaul of accounting information that would not have been required if we could have transitioned with the merger next year, it is the only way we can determine will prevent a disruption in our ability to continue our banking processes in the timeframe that we have available to get this into place. Typically, it takes about three months to comfortably convert to new accounts, contact all vendors and state agencies to update our electronic banking information, coordinate with our accounting software vendor to update the account and routing informations on the payroll and accounts payable checks, and communicate to all employees and departmental staff about this transition. However, we are looking at a maximum two-month implementation at best. So in a nutshell, we are requesting that you approve the resolution and agreement with BBNT today, which enables the early movement of the county's bank accounts from the SunTrust side of Truist to the BBNT side of Truist. This will allow us to secure banking services with a bricks-and-mortar branch as soon as possible and hopefully in time before the SunTrust branch transitions to First Horizon in June. Unless you have any questions about this process or our request in general, I would ask that you approve the resolution and agreement with BBNT as presented.
Got to mention to the board members too that Ron is on the phone. Do you need to recuse yourself, Kyle?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do I have a motion to accuse Commissioner Preier?
Absolutely.
It's been properly moved. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All right, rest of the board members, what's your pleasure?
Move for approval of the resolution and agreement as presented.
It's been properly moved. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say a few words now that the vote is over. I just want to thank Amy and the Finance Department for being expeditious about this. I certainly understand it was a rather unfortunate set of circumstances, however, beyond, beyond control. And, but just want to thank her for her speediness and recognizing what needs to be done and her leadership.
I got one quick question. Didn't really have any. Just, so the bank, the old SunTrust Bank here will be First Horizon starting?
May 4th, I believe.
And Truitt will be in other places or?
Well, you only, okay, Truitt, the official, it's BBNT, now Truist and SunTrust, now Truist. It hasn't, the systems haven't been combined.
Right.
So when First Horizon bought the SunTrust branch, they bought South Boston and a few other, and Durham and a few other, and Hillsborough as well. So within 18 to 21 months, you would, you will see all systems converging into one and then there will be no more BBNT, there'll be no more SunTrust. It would just be Truist at that point.
Well, where's First Horizon fitting into that? Just temporary?
No, First Horizon's its own bank.
Okay, oh, okay, I got you.
And my understanding is that divestiture process is delayed till June?
Okay.
That did give us a little bit of relief that we had time to get that transition before they actually took over.
And the reason of the divaster, especially in this market area, is if you know from back in the days, CCB, their headquarters was based in Durham. So you had a huge market share from CCB when they merged with SunTrust.
Right.
So the areas that are saturated, the DOJ said you are going to have to divest certain branches to control market share.
All right, thank y'all. Okay, rules of procedure of the Board of Commissioners, is Ron will go with this or might we read these additions?
I have not read them.
But Chairman, on your own, if you desire me to explain this.
Your own.
Okay.
As you know, the normal required procedure for Board of County Commissioners is to meet in person in the county. In view of the COVID-19 crisis, we thought it would be good to develop or authorize some alternative procedure for you. The law is not clear and so whether or not the board can meet electronically and not be physically present in the county. The law clearly authorizes the county to step into procedures. The law clearly authorizes the chairman through your ordinance to declare a state of emergency. The law clearly requires the public to be informed of any meeting and the law requires the public to be given an opportunity to observe the meeting. What we've done with this proposed change in rules is to pull together all of those requirements into a county rule which would authorize the board to meet electronically. Again, the presumption would be that you would meet as you were meeting this morning, but the conditions may not allow you to do so. The requirement in order to use this electronic meeting procedure includes that there be a state of emergency declared. The chairman has declared an emergency. Still in effect, so you will have met that requirement. If you need to meet electronically, then the chair should declare that need and inform the public that you will be meeting electronically and certify that it's necessary for you to meet electronically. You give notice of that electronic meeting by any reasonable means. Emergency meeting procedures authorize notification through any means. That would mean, for example, that your electronic list of people who have requested the notice would be activated. If you can, you would have an announcement through some other electronic means. Give the newspaper, who will be on that electronic list, notice through anything that you reasonably can to notify the public that you are meeting electronically. You also give the public an opportunity to observe the meeting. If one of you or the staff is able to connect up in the normal meeting room, you might do it just like today's meeting is being made available to the public. Otherwise, if you meet by telephone, then some device would have to be determined so that the public could listen in. Or there are all kinds of platforms for electronic meetings today. Zoom, Google Hangouts, and many others. So the IP staff and NACME staff will develop some process to make sure that the public can participate. In the sense there, you have a good number of other county boards and committees that need to meet occasionally as well. The proposed section receipt of the rules would authorize those other boards and committees to meet using the same procedures established for the Board of County Commissioners. That would include the Health Board, the Social Services Board, Planning Board, Board of Adjustments, Recreation Board, and others. Just specify those which are more likely to be required to meet. But it's only a list of examples and it's not exclusive to those boards. You would probably, you would probably implement this on a really accepted basis. Normally, we'd try to meet like your town, but this gives you the authority to carry on the county's business without the necessity of a physical meeting. I can explain more or answer questions if you desire.
Questions? Brother Attorney? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
It's been properly moved for approval. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Ron. Chairman's report, meeting next month. Did we want to announce now that we plan to only have one meeting next month, which will be our third Monday meeting at nine? Is that the understanding of the board?
So are you considering canceling the April 6 meeting and meeting on April 20th in a?
The board, think about that. Situation. We can do it month by month if we need to do. April, we need to do, May, we'll do it.
This is the time to do it during your official meetings.
Okay, all right, so we made that announcement. Manager?
Yes, good morning Commissioners. We wanted to also announce the measures that we were putting into place for county operations during the COVID-19 outbreak. So an email has gone out to county employees. They are aware. We also just want to make the public aware of what measures we're taking. So our county buildings after this meeting today will be locked to the public and that is in an effort to try to encourage folks to do more online, more by telephone, and we'll take individual appointments. There'll be phone numbers posted on the doors of the buildings to contact the departments that you may need to access. So the public is still able to interact with us. We're just trying to limit the number of people at any one time at a county facility. So county operations will continue with normal working hours. It's just that the way that we're interacting with the public will feel different for folks. So again, individual appointment basis is encouraged and that goes for all departments, including library, recreational facility, offices, et cetera. Our parks and walking tracks and such are remaining open, which is different than other communities, but we are keeping them open at this time. You heard this morning from the Pats director about the Pats operations being limited to medical appointments and employment transportation and then the expansion of the Uptown Shuttle starting on the 30th. Our recycling center is going to stop accepting materials due to the potential spread of the virus via that means. So the gates will be closing at noon today and the employees will continue working to sort and do single-stream processes of the materials. Our full-time county employees are being given an additional two weeks of paid leave. Part-timer getting an additional week of leave and that is to make us in compliance with some of the new mandates that have come down from us. There's also an expansion of FMLA and we have sent memos out to employees helping explain what that looks like and how to access and report that leave. We also rolled out our telecommuting policy to allow folks to work from home if they had a county-issued laptop and their job and office dynamics allowed that to be an option for them. So that's what we've put in place now and we're intending to keep those in place through April 6th with continuous consideration being given as circumstances changing, change. We have just found that the information has changed almost hourly in terms of what we're being directed to do. I have lots and lots of conference calls scheduled with association, the governor's office, the other county managers. We are having multi-week calls, about twice a week, just to try to stay updated. And so we have an excellent team in place. Janet Clayton, the Health Department Director, is sort of driving, driving the boat and preparing us and working closely with our emergency services director as well. That's the information that I have now. Wanted to make sure that we get the word out about our county buildings and appreciate your help and assistance in directing people to call and set up appointments with us as needed.
So how would that work for the library? So how would that work for the library?
The library is going to be looking at doing business differently. You can call to reserve books, you can reserve books online. We have lots of online resources for books and they will bring your books out to the curbside. They're also doing some videos of Storytime, some other creative options for ways that they can continue to serve the public without having a library full of people. We are one of the only libraries that has remained open in the region, so we have seen a large increase in our traffic and we'll try to minimize that. Our goal is to not have more than ten people in a county facility at any one time.
All right, has there been discussion from the state versus mandated and non-mandated services as far as what counties are providing when they say essential if something happens? What does that lead us with the laws we have to follow when it comes to Health Department, DSS, and some of those mandated services?
So the mandated services are continuing. The state has given us direction about allowing some of the home visits to be less than we used to have to do. They are still doing some home visits, they are encouraging appointment basis and DSS has a secure Dropbox for applications for services so that they are able to just come up and get an application and leave it and then be called back by a caseworker.
They're also online, I think some links are added there too. The only concern I have with DSS is we've got so many people packed in such a tight space. I mean, they have so many cubicles up there. It's a lot of people.
It is a lot of people, yeah. And we're hoping with the leave that we're granting to employees that they'll be able to make some choices to stay home if they, you know, have compromised immune systems, if they have childcare needs, elderly care needs. That leave is at their discretion.
And the ones who have county laptops, they can work from home?
They can work from home with the approval of their supervisor. We have a policy that temporarily went into place allowing them to begin working at home on a regular basis. So you will see more and more county employees doing that.
I would just issue this concern or comment to your department directors, to you, to supervisors who may have these laptops, who have the opportunity to probably work from home, but I would hate to see people in leadership, staff leadership, taking advantage of it when their workers have to be there. And I understand everybody's situation is differently, but I would look out to make sure it's not being abused.
We'll keep a close eye on that.
Questions from the Board?
Any other? Is library only curbside, is that what you're telling me? Or will they allow three or four people at a time to go in, how long is that distance from each other?
We're encouraging folks to call and set an appointment for a time that they could come in and access the library. They can do that.
But they got to stay separated.
Right, and they're also are willing to do the curbside if you don't want to come in and know what materials you want.
So you do have a option.
Yeah.
Okay, I knew that when it first started before any rule was made, I had a person in the public to tell me that they had been not allowing a lot of crowd in there. They had allowed a few at a time, so I thought that was real sharp on somebody's part who did that and it wasn't any reflection on the county. It was just something they did that I thought was pretty realistic. So that's what I was interested in.
There, go ahead.
You said we were one of the few ones left remaining open, that the rest are closed.
For the library and for the recreational park walking trails. A lot of other communities are not allowing access to those.
Well, I guess my question is why wasn't that a recommendation to not allow access inside the library?
Why is it not a recommendation?
No, well, you're.
Or why did we stay open?
Why are you staying open as opposed to?
Other counties are doing.
Other counties are doing.
I think that we believe that the library is now more needed than ever with children being home from school and parents having access to resources. And because all of the other communities have shut theirs down, we wanted to continue to try to provide that service in a safe way for our residents. So we're trying this. If it doesn't work, we'll go back to the drawing board and reconsider our options. But we feel like there are means that we can put in place to continue to provide those services that are much needed while kids are home from school and homeschooling is what we're all doing.
I understand that, but it is a non-mandated service.
Right.
And, you know, our biggest priority from the county is also looking after our own employees too with that. So that's, just please keep a.
Right. And that's part of why we are closing to the public is to protect our workforce as well.
So we're giving this pretty much a try till April sixth, I guess.
That's right.
And then we can extend it, do something different or?
Yep.
Heidi mentioned the conference call tomorrow with the Governor, it's for county officials. I don't know if you all got that email, but if you didn't, I can forward it to you. And as a board member of NCACC, I can submit questions. So if you have any questions about the virus, about what's going on or whatnot, if you shoot them to me, I will definitely submit them and see if they make the call.
There is another call that just was announced today with the Speaker of the House as well for county commissioners to join with Tim Moore. I assume that you all are getting those, but I'm happy to forward them as well if you're not, okay.
Okay, other questions for the manager? Commissioner reports, Commissioner Powell?
No, sir.
Clayton?
No.
Preier?
Just want to urge our county residents during this difficult and unprecedented time to please do your best to support our local businesses. I mean, the impact that this is having is going to, is very strenuous on them. So do your best to make a priority to shop or get takeout locally.
I'd like one quick comment. We went online a while ago, but I do want to mention that Clorox is something you can use if you don't have alcohol. Mix it up according to directions, you can look online and see what it is, the percentages are.
Thank you, Commissioner Sims?
Nothing.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
The proper move for discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.